Good evening, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board of appeals public hearing for October 24th. This meeting will occur in person with the option to join remotely via computer tablet, smartphone device, or through the phone. Just a few housekeeping reminders. If folks have a phone or electronic device, you can just turn it off or put on vibrate so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. And if you have any conversations or any discussions, if you could take it outside of the hallway, we would appreciate it. We're going to take the agenda out of order this evening. We're going on to other business. We have a minor modification for 74 to 76 Beauvais Street and 253 West Sixth Street. Attorney John Gay representing ZR Development Group has requested a minor modification for their project at 74 to 76 Beauvais Street and 253 West Sixth Street. The applicant is requesting to remove five parking spaces along Beauvais Street that were in the original plan.
Communication. Peter, is Attorney Gary online? Is Attorney Gary online on Zoom?
We did get communication that they're going to withdraw the minor modification. Thank you. We've got a letter from Gary and Gary LOP dated for October 24th. It says, Dear Mr. Chairman, I am writing to request the applicant request for a minor modification of the zoning board of appeals decision dated July 25th, 2022 will be to be withdrawn without prejudice at this time. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. Yours truly, John C. Gary. I don't think anyone's here for this petition, but we did get the notice to withdraw. Any discussion by my colleagues? Seeing none, can we have a motion to withdraw, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the minor modification at 74, 76 Beauvais Street and 253 West Sixth Street to be withdrawn, to accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we roll call, please? Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Approval. Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
All right. Going back to our scheduled agenda item under continued business, we have ZBA-2022-46, a petition as a variance. The applicant is House of Hope Incorporated, property located at 35 Varnum Ave. House of Hope has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals, seeking a variance approval to construct an eight-unit apartment building at 35 Varnum Ave. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district. The project requires zoning board approval of variance for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, maximum stories, maximum height requirement, and maximum front yard setback under section 5.1, minimum off-duty parking space under section 6.1, the construction of more than one primary residential dwelling structure on a lot under section 5.2.2, relief from the landscape open space requirement under section 5.3.1, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Board members. My name is Deb Shasse, and I live in South Lowell, and I'm the executive director of House of Hope, and I've been leading this amazing organization for more than 20 years. We have grown a lot, but it has been thoughtful growth that balances the emergency needs of Lowell's homeless families with their long-term needs for safe, affordable, supportive, and permanent housing, so that both parents and children have a chance to break the cycle of poverty and deep disadvantage. 35 Varnum Avenue represents both commitments, as we currently operate in emergency shelter serving seven homeless families and hope to be good stewards of this valuable vacant land by building eight units of permanent housing with support services. We appreciate the concerns of our Clinton abutters. No one likes change. They have enjoyed the open and undeveloped land of our backyard for many years. Also for many years, there has been no access to their street due to a gateless five-foot fence that has prevented seven families in shelter from easier access to Mammoth Road and its conveniences, including the bus. House of Hope also has concerns, because we have a 35-year history in Lowell of embracing change and growth by serving our neediest neighbors, and we feel compelled to use our land in service to our mission of, quote, "building economic self-sufficiency, promoting neighborhood stability, and providing educational opportunities to improve the lives of our poorest children." We met with our abutters on October 11th and came to understand that they have many concerns about their immediate neighborhood, which affects their quality of life. If I lived on Clinton Ave., I too would be frustrated. What I did not hear during the cordial meeting was specific concerns about House of Hope. In fact, as you heard at our last meeting, there is a great deal of support for House of Hope and the work that we do. The issues that were raised at the last zoning meeting were largely mitigated as we agreed to continue to prevent access to Clinton Avenue, relocate the dumpster, and increase the landscaping guided by our neighbors' inputs in order to mitigate noise and to enhance privacy. We agreed to all of the neighbors' requested changes. During the neighborhood meeting, we did not hear much acknowledgement from our neighbors about our changes, but rather we heard grievances aimed at the city, the crime, the local businesses, and drug use, sewage issues, and personal problems within households. We also heard again, as we did at the prior zoning board meeting, about previous issues with the GRIP program that were the former residents occupants of 35 Varnum Avenue over 13 years ago. One attendee spoke about our need for stormwater management, which we totally agree with, as we would agree with managing any issue impacting our neighbors. The same attendee suggested that we relocate the driveway to the other side of the building so that the drive would be further away from Clinton Avenue, but the building would be closer. Clinton Ave. residents were not interested in that idea. The same attendee also suggested that we consider looking at access to our property from Clinton Avenue, of which we abut. There were other suggestions, like using Regatta Field on the boulevard, buy a vacant building, and build outside of Lowell. In time, House of Hope would be open to pursuing each of these ideas and more. But today, we are looking to build on our property, a building that aligns with our mission, and the City of Lowell's commitment to affordable housing while adding to the residential tax base. We do appreciate that this neighborhood is dense, that it is single-family zoned. Our analysis has shown that there are many, two, and some two-plus family properties in this TSF zone, and that our building, based on its elevation and design, will not be the tallest structure in the neighborhood, nor will adding a building on our property represent a departure from the existing pattern of development. I can say that I and my team attended this meeting in good faith. We presented the changes that were requested, and we hoped that our Clinton Ave. neighbors would appreciate our mission, acknowledge our concessions, and judge us by our track record. This was not to be. The meeting was not productive, and it seemed to me that our Clinton Ave. neighbors attended to again insist that we not develop our unique property. I apologize for this long-winded presentation, but it reflects our truths. We have also spoken with others to explain our project and seek their support, so in addition to CBA and CTI, we have also received written in our verbal support from Lowell General Hospital, Merrimack Valley Food Bank, Representative Vanna Howard, Bill Gar from Lowell House, and we are talking to others in order to grow our support. Affordable housing for homeless families is desperately needed throughout our city and state. At last week's city council meeting, it was reported that there are 500-plus homeless families in our city. 500 families represents many hundreds of children, and tonight, House of Hope is sheltering almost 100 of them. It was also reported that 10% of Lowell's student population have identified as homeless in 2122 school year. 10%. I am dreading the report for this current year. Tonight, House of Hope is sheltering 58 families, and way too many of them have been sheltered for way too many months. They need the simple necessity of a home, and House of Hope is asking for support to add to our successful nonprofit portfolio of 39 units and create an additional eight. Last week, according to the Lowell Sun, city councillor Nuon said, "The number of, quote, 'the number of unhoused students is really troubling,' unquote," and he acknowledged that we are fortunate to have a great team to do what they can, and added that, quote, "We need to do all that we can to mitigate this crisis," unquote. House of Hope is a part of this team. We are committed to the bricks and mortar response that serves everyone. We are proven. Evaluate us by our outcomes. We were invited by DHCD to seek out this funding. The timeline was short, as the Commonwealth knows of the compelling need to get shovel-ready projects that serve homeless families going quickly. We sincerely believe that we have an obligation to use all of House of Hope's resources in a way that benefits Lowell's families. Creating new, taxable, high-quality, affordable housing for our poorest neighbors on our land that does not change the overall character of our neighborhood should not be seen as a detriment to the public good. Maybe this effort could be defined as doing the public good. My team will further present on specific characteristics and respond to previously stated concerns regarding 35 Varnum Avenue as we seek the City of Lowell support in the form of the requested variances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Jacob Taylor from Klein Hornig.
Evening.
Is it possible to put the slideshow up on the screen? Looks like there's an error message on that one. I don't know if that's showing up on everyone else's. You guys able to see? Excellent. All right. Thank you for taking the time to hear from us again. As Deb indicated, we remain confident that the unused space at the rear of 35 Varnum Avenue is an optimal location for this important development, which would provide safe, affordable, permanent housing to eight formerly homeless families. This project advances core goals of the city's master plan, such as building and maintaining a diversity of housing and ensuring that all residents have safe and secure places to call home. The applicant has incorporated changes to its proposal that are responsive to the concerns expressed by neighbors at the prior meeting and which will help ensure that the project will not create a substantial detriment to the public good. And because there was some confusion as to the specific items of relief that we were requesting in the last meeting and some items that we are not requesting for relief for, I want to just run through those. We're seeking three-dimensional variances under 5.1 of the zoning ordinance. The first is for lot area per dwelling unit. The second is to allow for the new building to exceed the maximum setback of 20 feet, and that's needed because the new building is located behind the existing building. And third, we're requesting relief with respect to usable open space. We're also requesting a variance under 5.2.2 to allow for more than one primary residential dwelling structure on the lot, and we're requesting a variance under 6.1 to allow for an aggregate of 17 parking spaces on the site, with two of these being accessible spaces. And I'll note, there's currently five designated parking spots on the site, so this would reflect an increase of 12 parking spaces, and we expect that that's more than adequate to meet the demand.
One minute, sir. Mr. Katrambus, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, I don't remember. Staff, this is happening, and I do not believe that they need a variance for a lot area per dwelling unit, because that would involve extra uses, whereas the current building is on site of institution use. So the way we have considered is that is not happening in the same way. It's the director.
Peter, do you have a microphone? Do you have a microphone? There is no microphone. No, it's just I don't know if many of the people in the public can hear you without a microphone, so that's why. Maybe someone back there can get us a new one, but okay, no problem.
Yeah, the point being that lot area per dwelling only applies to residential use, and the way that we looked at that current building is like 700% of the institution use. So we don't believe there need variance for that. Ultimately, that's up to.
Thank you, Mr. Katrambus. Go ahead, sir. Apologize.
Sure. So can you switch to the next slide, please? Thank you. I'll note that, there we go, perfect. I'll note that we're not seeking relief with respect to building height as to either stories or feet, and we're not requesting relief with respect to landscaped open space, as the proposed project complies with those requirements. As you can see from this slide, the proposed building height is 30 feet 5 inches, and the maximum in this district is 32 feet. Next slide, please. This next slide shows the height in terms of stories, and you'll note that the third level is about 67% of the square footage of the second level, and we believe that it does qualify as a half-story. Next slide, please. So this next slide illustrates the landscaped open space in front of the existing building and shows that the new landscaping layout will meet the 50% required in front of the building between the facade and the street. Next slide, please. So since we were last before this board, the House of Hope team has met with the neighbors and listened. They revised their plans and removed the gate between our site and Clinton Avenue and reconfigured the proposed dumpster location. House of Hope also remains committed to utilizing appropriate privacy fencing to ensure that any impact of the proposed driveway on the Clinton Avenue neighbors is limited. We believe that the project meets the relevant criteria for a variance. This lot is unique in terms of its size and depth, and it can accommodate the additional building without creating density that would be out of character with the neighborhood. This is a very deep 33,970-square-foot lot in a district with a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet, and our architectural team will provide additional context on the scale of the proposed building shortly. The project will also advance public good insofar as it will provide desperately needed affordable housing, units for families in need, and it is consistent with the priorities expressed in the city's master plan. The master plan identifies the following priorities: building and maintaining a diversity of housing options throughout the city, maintaining distribution of affordable housing throughout the neighborhoods, and supporting and promoting programs that rapidly rehouse individuals or families who are currently homeless. This project will advance all of these objectives. And finally, the requested relief can be granted without derogating from the intent of the zoning ordinance, because the layout enassing have been carefully designed to minimize adverse effects on the neighbors, and the project will advance core priorities identified by the city. I'll now turn over to Cliff Bomer from Davis Square Architects to present on the design of the new building and the proposed site improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Again, my name's Cliff Bomer. I'm a principal at Davis Square Architects. Peter, if you wouldn't mind backing up two slides. There we go. I just wanted to reiterate a couple points about the program or emphasize a couple of things. You've seen this diagram that includes the aerial photograph that shows where the proposed footprint is and also points out the accessory building that we have to remove in order to develop the new structure. As far as program, I did want to point out a couple of kind of mission-driven things that we think are important. One, as you know, it is an eight-unit building, two three-bedroom units and six two-bedroom units. One of those eight units will be a fully accessible unit. One of the ground-level units will be fully accessible. That exceeds both federal and state requirements for accessibility. The building is much too small to really trigger even one unit. We're also making all of our units compliant with all of the dimensional requirements of group-one units, which are generically known as kind of adaptable units. We also are including two accessible parking spaces. Both of them are van-accessible, but we have the option, because we share the aisle with an adjacent space, to increase that up to four accessible spaces. I did want to point out one other, I think, improvement to existing conditions, which, as you know, currently there's a basketball court on the site. We're proposing to remove that basketball court and introduce a much more benign, quieter type of playground suitable for very young children only. Peter, if you could go to the next slide. This, again, is an image you've seen before, but I did want to point out a couple things that I think dovetail into some of the density issues that I want to dig into a little more deeply. I think what you see here is, first of all, the proportions of the site. I could have mentioned that previous slide, but the proportions of the site that Jacob mentioned, it's a very skinny, long site, but very big site. What you see from this aerial photograph is that our site plus a few of the adjacent sites are really an anomaly in a very dense residential neighborhood, which is why we see so many amenities. The level of amenities that are walkable in this neighborhood are consistent with what you'd expect in this kind of density, and we think that's a terrific benefit for the residents, for the future residents, to have such good access to amenities and services as well. Next slide, please. The next slide is showing, you've seen these again, but I'll reemphasize a couple of points. On the upper left-hand side, you see our neighbor to the north. The first building you see at the far left on the upper left-hand image is our closest neighbor. You see the north elevation of that building. It has no windows on it at all. In the middle of the image, you do see the rear gable elevation of the accessory building that we're proposing to remove. Far right, you see a very large, beautiful tree that we intend to prune and preserve as part of our program, and as important as anything, I think you get an idea of the depth of the site. The upper right-hand image is a view from the basketball court. Again, we're proposing to provide a much quieter, more benign use there, a little tot lot for toddler-age children. You see the paving that we're also proposing to remove. We are adding paving in the form of some driveway extensions, but we're also removing paving as well. The lower left-hand image, you're looking at the southern elevations of our two neighbors on Clinton. Again, I do want to emphasize the minimal openings on that side of the house that, of course, restricts any view they have from their homes to our building. The lower right-hand slide is a look up Clinton towards our site, looking north up Clinton, and I think there you get, or south, I'm sorry, you get a very good idea of the kind of dense neighborhood that surrounds us. The next image, I think this is a pretty important image. This is where we were prior to meeting with our neighbors, as Jacob and I think Deb has also mentioned. Up in that upper left-hand column, you see the neighbors' concerns that we heard clearly, and I know all of you did and responded to the last time we were here. That includes a pedestrian access to Clinton Avenue, a great deal of concern, because they have enjoyed the fact that while we have rights to the street, it hasn't been used by any of the current residents of the site. The location of the dumpster was also a concern. For one neighbor spoke about it, and actually, there's another neighbor that we think it also helps by changing the direction of it, and of course, that potential for noise, which we think we've mitigated through a pretty big change in the use of our outdoor space. The ZBA observations, several of them Jacob addressed, I think, given that we don't actually need relief for the scale of the building. The number of variances went down from eight to five from what we originally thought. That third bullet point under the ZBA observations was your concern about introduction of the multifamily building to the traditional single-family zone. I think something we, I want to point out in a little more detail about. Deb mentioned it, Jacob mentioned it, the type of neighborhood we're already in, the anomaly that we believe our site is relative to the existing pattern of development, and I'll give you some details about that in a few slides. You also had some, I think, very legitimate concerns about inconsistencies in the drawings. We are working to make all of the drawings consistent with each other. Our civil engineer is here tonight, who will discuss what he has changed in his drawings, but I do believe that we're at a pretty good place as far as you having confidence that we know what we're actually proposing and requesting. The next slide is the revised site plan. Of note is, I've mentioned it already, but it isn't totally clear, but at the far-left corner, you see rather than a dumpster where that number nine is, is actually a parking space now. It's not the dumpster. We've moved the dumpster to the end of the little parking area. You see the red flag pointing out the relocated dumpster. We no longer are showing that gate going into Clinton. We've removed that from the scope. I've already talked about the playground. That location has not changed since the last plan, and I think virtually everything else is the same as you saw previously on the site plan. Jacob offered some clarifications about the open space in the front, but we haven't changed the design because we already met the requirement. There are, I think you see, and I think that was our last time, I'm sorry, don't remember, all of the screening along our Clinton neighbors is shown in this plan pretty clearly, as well as screening on the left-hand side at where the parking spaces are, as well as around the dumpster, yeah, as well as around the dumpster. The next slide is more of what we wanted to talk about as far as density and concerns about the introduction of a multifamily building to a traditional single-family zone. I think the important thing here is, we looked around, we started, we're using the assessor site, so I can only verify that our site, so I can only verify that our observations conform with the assessor's site, but within a 500-foot circle of our site, there are 30 properties that have more than one unit on their site. We looked at a very small sample. If you look at the rest of that traditional single-family zone, which is significantly greater than the sample that we looked at, I don't know that you would see a similar kind of percentage of sites that actually, very small sites that actually have buildings with more than one unit. We didn't really have the time to look at all of them, but there are a lot of sites that we did look at. I think that's really about what I had to say. I will say that most of those sites are two-family. They're not three-family or greater, but within that 500-foot circle, there is at least one building that has as many as nine units in it. And we can flip to the next page. I think as interesting, that probably emphasizes the kind of unusual nature of our site in addition to the proportions of the site. If you take all of the adjacent sites on Clinton, add them all up, their total site area is 22,500 square feet. Our site is almost 34,000 square feet. And I think basically, I'm just really trying to emphasize why I think we've exercised a high degree of responsibility in looking at existing patterns of development. They have shaped our building in a way that we think does not create negative impact on the neighbors and feel like we're being very sensitive to the existing pattern of development, which is why we were here in the first place. But I did want to emphasize that. Next sheet, or slide, sheet in my case, is a view looking down Clinton. And where that red arrow points, that is our proposed new building, as it would be perceived from several homes down. On Clinton, you also see a fence. We're proposing a six-foot privacy fence rather than a gate opening up into the street. We do want to screen that along that entire property line, not just with the fence, but with fabric woven into the fence, so there's no negative impact from headlights that would travel on the driveway to service the new building. The little inset image is just the way it is now, but I think our intent is really to show what we see as a minimal visual impact from your views on Clinton. At this point, I think I'd like to have Jim DeVellis present the civil slides. Again, we've worked to coordinate them, but I think he wants to give you some details about stormwater management and other critical design elements.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, sir.
I'm sorry?
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Jim DeVellis. I'm a professional civil engineer, and our firm is providing, from DeVellis Arena, and our firm is providing civil engineering and landscape architecture for this project. And I feel a little uncomfortable, extenuating circumstance, no disrespect to the board. I usually don't dress like this coming to a meeting, so I apologize for that. Between the first series, the first meeting they had in this meeting, as far as the engineering, the grading, drainage utilities, stayed identical. I think Cliff did a nice job. We went back to the site, reevaluated some of the concerns. We moved the dumpster. You know, from a bird's-eye view, I think he saw, he explained what was on the civil drawings on the colored rendering, but we moved the dumpster. We added a lot more landscaping. We closed, we removed the gate to the right-of-way that we have on Clinton Ave. The access is completely gone now. And then we did another analysis of your largest fire truck, brought it through the site and provided the turning radius back to the board for that, which is shown on this plan here. So in your packet, you have grading, drainage, utilities, and the details. And I think if you have any questions, I can answer that, or if you want me to expand on the presentation, I can do that as well.
Whatever you prefer, sir.
Okay. I think I'll answer questions if you have any questions.
If you're all set, we'll open here into the public. And then afterwards, if we have questions, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, just before we open it to the public, I just wanted to apologize to the board. I misinterpreted Section 5.2.1, the variance for minimum water per dwelling unit. They do need to apply for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trump. Thank you for the presentation. If you have no further comments, we'll open here into the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor?
Hi, my name is Rachel Gano. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I'm a board member for House of Hope, and I'm very much in favor of this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Jeff Bush, and I'm the president of Heritage Properties, a property management and development company that's been based in Lowell since our inception 44 years ago. I'm also a proud board member of the House of Hope. As a board member, perhaps I'm a bit biased when I say that the community in Lowell is lucky to have an organization like the House of Hope within its borders and providing housing and services to some of our most vulnerable neighbors. You don't have to be a housing expert to understand that our current economic environment is a challenging one regardless of your income level. Rising inflation, interest rates, and historically low levels of supply have made it a challenging two-plus years for anyone seeking permanent housing. We need more housing built across all product types, from single-family homes to condos, apartments, shelters, and transitional housing. The units, and equally important, services proposed at this location on Varnum Ave are a win-win for the community, and I think we would be remiss to let this opportunity pass us by. Not only will these units increase the opportunities for families to move from shelter to a more permanent housing situation, but they'll do so in a location that already provides services that are needed by families in transition. My experience working in this wonderful city tells me that reputation is everything. Most of the people in this room are here tonight because they consider themselves long-term stakeholders in the city and community. It's important to consider that when evaluating a project like the proposal before you. Are the applicants honest and upfront with what they're hoping to do at the site? Do they have a track record of performing as they say they will? Do they continue to invest in their properties long after their entitlements are achieved? I think the answer is resounding yes to the House of Hope, and I'm optimistic that you'll take advantage of this opportunity to provide much-needed housing while working with an excellent partner for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, seeing on that portion of public hearing is closed.
Hi, excuse me, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cornelia Cogswell. I live at 128 Warren Street in Lowell. I'm also a happy board member of House of Hope, and I really would like to strongly support their request for variances. I think everybody has sort of laid it out that the proposal is thoughtful, and they've been responsive to the community. And I think that's just a tip of the iceberg, because House of Hope is a wonderful organization, and again, has a wonderful track record that you can depend on. So, strongly support it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, seeing on that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Janest. I'm at 20 Clinton Avenue, my property abuts, the proposal of the House of Hope. I guess one of my first questions I spoke out at the last meeting, they've asked for a lot of different variants, and to me, it's a red flag. If they have to keep asking for one thing after another to make this happen, it doesn't belong on the plot of land that they're looking for. The land is small. It's already congested with construction of homes, homes that have been there for a while. These multi-dwelling homes that they're talking about are not recently built. They have been in the city for a long time. The impact of building on a small space impacts our street, not just our street, but Ellis Ave, Janest Ave. So, it's not just Clinton Street. And those photographs that make Clinton look a lot bigger than it did, and I want to know how they got pictures without cars on that street because there's no room. Some of the things that we've been concerned about is the impact of the storage. Right now, we can't even get somebody to come up and clean our storage. Now we're going to have extra storage from the building coming in. Water builds up already on our street, and it's already causing some caving in in the street. It runs off from the House of Hope. My backyard, abuts House of Hope, and there's water that drains down into my yard, in which I am constantly dealing with, like mushroom growth or things in the yard because of excess water. The street floods enough from rain, I can't imagine having now pavement with an incline coming down into our street. Let's see. The overall environmental impact, I've heard them say the building's green, but you're now taking away a green space that provides homes to little animals that are there. I know it's kind of trivial, but it does mean something. That also could be, we don't know what's buried under there. My backyard, I found plenty of treasures back there when I've been planting things, so I don't know what kind of contaminants are in that open space that they claim that they're going to make greener with the building. I'm worried about the traffic and fire safety. They talk about having a fire truck come down and turn around on the proposed driveway. Again, I think they had to ask for extra variance or something from the fire department for that. Again, that's another red flag. It doesn't belong. Let's see, what else? The gates, I think they've covered that they're not going to open the gates. I bought my house at a dead-end street so there wouldn't be foot traffic. The fact that they want to open that up and have people come in and going on that little street, that'll be between my car and my home or around the home. I don't want that to become a place of loitering because the people in the apartments might have friends that might come, come through there. I don't want that. I could care less about the basketball noise. I don't mind that. That's nothing compared to what they're wanting to propose. And then the snow, we can barely get snow removal. So if you have gates there and they go to do snow, where are we going to park? Right now, I'm thinking, can we park there if they open that up? There won't be enough room for pedestrians to come. Our street has no sidewalks. It's a quiet street, and I feel, and my neighbors do, that if they build there, there goes that little hominess. Talk about affordable housing, all of us are there because of affordable housing. It's what we could afford at the time of our purchase. That's where I can afford to stay. And I don't begrudge anybody. I work in the Lowell School Department. I have taught in the system for 29 years. I've seen what House of Hope has done to help my families. I help children and families every day. So, I feel like I found that their money has a time limit, and I feel like this was their quick fix to try to find a place that they could get this money into and build what they needed. They have other resources they can look into. And personally, a privacy fence, going to have cars coming down, they're going to be hitting my VRM house and the house next to us into the bedrooms that are in the back. I don't want, I have my grandkids come and stay. They don't need to be woken up with headlights. Let's see, let's see. I mean, and also a privacy fence, you can still, if you stand up on the top of where their present building is, you can see into my yard, the privacy is not going to be there for me what I have now. And again, I just feel like they do great work, and I'm not putting them down. I think they're amazing in what they do, but I just don't want this eight-unit apartment building placed at the bottom of our street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can you ask each speaker to speak into the mic?
Yes. Yes. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Elizabeth Ty, and I'm here representing the Pawtucket Citizens Council. We have been speaking with the neighbors of Clinton Ave and the properties directly around House of Hope, and we've also heard from other Pawtucket citizens about this particular project and how it will affect all of Pawtucketville. Now, it's no question, we agree with the mission of House of Hope. They do wonderful work, and that is not at question here at all. We appreciate the opinions of those who spoke in support of this project. However, we, the citizens of Pawtucketville, will be the ones who live with the ramifications of this project. You know, the impact of it goes beyond Clinton Street. You know, one of our, we have objections that stem from the following. The first is that building an eight-family unit on a traditional neighborhood, single-family lot, sets a precedent which could affect the issuance of permits and variances in the future. If this is allowed, can the next three lots be sold to developers, and then they can build the same type of units on there? There's no guarantee that that won't happen. Approximately 30 variances have been requested by House of Hope, and that should be a red flag that this project does not conform to current zoning codes and basically requires rewriting of those zoning codes. In conclusion, we feel that the purpose of this project should not be considered a decision in the zoning codes that apply to all developers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, Patricia Case at A. Clinton Ave. First of all, this picture that you guys showed with no cars, once in a million. We look like Hampton Beach during the summertime, even in the winter, right? I am here on my husband's birthday, right? His first birthday without his mother, and I'm here. I should be home, or we should be out celebrating his birthday, but no, I'm here, right? Whoever took the pictures of how big the land is, if and when I sell my house, please come take my pictures. It'll make my house look a lot bigger, my yard look bigger, my driveway will look bigger. This is business to them. I understand that. This is personal to us. We have a small street. It is loud as it is, between 7:00 and 11:00, McDonald's, the bank, the teens, the college kids. We don't need more noise. We are fine with House of Hope as it is. I suggested making it smaller. They didn't want to hear that at all. No, 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 it has to be eight units, right? You know, so, I was going to give a little, you know, but they didn't want to give it all. This is personal to us. It is business to them, and that is my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Orvin Ramos. I live at 14 Clinton Avenue, and my mom lives on the first floor. I'm probably the only one there with the two-unit in that street, which hopefully we can convert it back to one, but because it is a very small street. As, I mean, you saw in the picture, without cars, there were no sidewalks. Where are these people supposed to walk? My sisters actually hit a pedestrian because they came down in a bike, which I had heard they're going to have bike wrecks as well. Why, I don't know. They're going to be stolen probably in the first week, but coming across through Mammoth, she's just pulling out right from the sidewalk, somebody hits her with a bike. There's no place to walk there at all. We can barely get by just walking there, the people, the residents who live there. That's insane, but there's plenty of more issues that I have. When they invited us over, I really thought this was in good faith, but all the questions we proposed, they were very dismissive about it. I can tell you, when I told them about the stormwater impact, because several neighbors of mine have had water come back into their basement, and it's not just one or two, it's most of them. There's also the fact of traffic, like I mentioned, whether it's foot traffic or driving around. I also brought up the issue of illegal dumping because from my porch, I can actually see when people dump liquids and garbage and even mattresses over to the parking lot of TD Bank, which they have cameras and all. And they're like, well, we have somebody staffed there. So does TD Bank, so does McDonald's. And when things get dumped, the police will get there eventually, but they'll leave. People leave. It doesn't matter. They don't, it's not like there's a security guard at all times. Again, it's like my neighbors mentioned as well, they need adequate access for the fire department. While it may look great in pictures, if you actually go down in person, which I have, that there's no way a truck's going to be able to turn there. Adequate water and sewage infrastructure, again, goes to the water and the sewer, the sewer water coming back into the homes. If they're in the hill, that's more now. And when I've asked about this, when I asked at the meeting about these questions, they mentioned how, once upon a time, somebody went and dug up back in early 2000 and nothing was found, even though out of all the projects that I've seen around the VFW Highway, there's been... Highway, there's been contamination in the soil, and we know this because we see it on the newspaper all the time. There's also the issue of, especially the environmental impact of this. There's also the health and safety issue. All this construction going on, dust-up and everything, most of the people who live on Clinton Ave are elderly. And then there's another issue I would like to bring up, the spot zoning issue, because again, this is a single-family residential area, and now, it's, they're not talking about one or two units, or even three. We're talking about eight. Eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's enormous. Doesn't matter how you look at it, this is huge. Then there's also, I was looking up to see all the other services that are offered in the city of Lowell. And again, I'm not against what the House of Hope does, because as I can see from my list, there might be more, so if I'm not accurate in some of these numbers, but these are the, from what I could find as of today, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, six surrounding addresses where House of Hope operates. Thirty-five, obviously, right now, 35 Varnameve, 812 Merrimack Street, 520 Fletcher Street, 203 Salem Street, 172 Lakeview Avenue, 98 Smith Street. Then there was others I found. Millie's Place on 360 Pawtucket Street, which is right down the street. Pathfinder Milestone, 94 Rock Street. Now, I'm not sure if that's open because from the comments I saw, it might have been, I don't know if it got closed down to COVID or whatnot, but if it is closed, why not invest the money there? The structure's already there. You could save a lot of money doing that. And when I asked, when I had asked this at the meeting as well, why they didn't look at other properties, they said that it was a short time and they kind of had to rush things because they didn't even think that we're going to get the award. On a massive project like that, people should be prepared. Then I also saw Life Connections, 192 Appleton Street, Megan's House on Berry Street, which is also in the Pawtucketville area, Aaron's House, that's in Drake, but it's not far off, and Asians Task Force, was they, all these places offer shelter. And if you look at a map of all these, I would have liked to present something here, but unfortunately, I didn't have the time. I just rushed from Braintree where I work to come back home. And these are all right in the, right there in Pawtucketville. This isn't, with the exception of obviously the one in Appleton Street, but they're all right there. Why can't they be expanded out? I mean, like, from the last meeting when we were here, the previous zoning case they were speaking about, not far from here, I believe it was by Washington Bank on Appleton Street, they were going to add another one. I understand you guys, it felt very hostile, the way you guys were speaking to the attorney, and I understand he's for the bank and, you know, they're not really tenants or whatnot, but the problem is, that same street right there has a lot of elderly people, which obviously those buildings are owned by corporations, so they probably didn't even get noticed. And I know for a fact, some of these people, because my sister has clients of them, has some for clients, they've been robbed, they've been mugged, all in that area. And I'm not trying to compare it to what they're doing here, but we need to expand. Why is everything being crammed right into that space? And again, like I said, they could have looked at other options, but when I, when I brought up any objection I had, they were very dismissive about it, and that's the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Good evening. Jocelyn Lassert, representing my father, Roger Lassert, at 17 Clinton Ave. Many of the residents of Clinton Ave have voiced their impassioned opposition to the petition presented by the owners of 35 Varnameve. We are all very concerned about the scope of the proposal for various reasons as already presented. This petition is asking this board to exempt the owners of the property from seven slash eight specific zoning requirements, plus a final broad request for, quote, "any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance," unquote. For a petition to seek relief for so many zoning requirements suggests to me, as others have suggested, that this is not the right property for this proposed project. Perhaps a broader search of other properties within the city, perhaps in opportunities, opportunity zones, as outlined in the city's plans, would yield an asset that is better suited for their goals, a property that may be repurposed with little to no impact on its surrounding area. Whenever I cross the school street bridge, I'm reminded of how the old Franco-American school has been redeveloped into the housing that now exists there. What of the property known as Basha Hall on Pawtucket Street? A property like that has proximity to the downtown services and public transportation. It has existing ample parking. It's in walking distance to North Common Park, and has no issues with abutting, single-family neighbors. While the fate of that building is unknown to me, I cite that property as an example that such redevelopment opportunities may exist in the city with just a little research. Raw land is a premium commodity in a city like Lowell. There's no question about it. The abutters on the other side of 35 Varnameve have a huge parcel of land. Of course, it's in your backyard, and it's easy to look at that as a solution, but that's precisely why green space and open space zoning requirements exist. The reality of the proposed budget is that it will demolish an existing outdoor structure. Bulldozers will come in to level essentially all of the green space that is now there and lay down a parking lot in a very large building, as evidenced in the pictures this evening. The construction of the apartment building will bring an additional eight families onto a single space. People and cars make noise, as others have said. Sometimes even turmoil and arguments occur between neighbors, and as others have pointed out, there's some concern about rubbish in spite of the fact that the dumpsters have been admittedly moved to a different location. But 12 additional families indicates the potential for 36 persons occupying an additional structure on this land, and 12 additional automobiles moving about and throughout the day, evenings, and weekends, as families will do, going to school, going to work, going to the supermarket, and just living in general. According to city records, there are nine homes on Clinton Ave, and there are about 30 residents. This proposed building is going to be bringing in more than the sum total of an existing city street on one lot. To allow this petition to move forward would take all of these residents, their vehicles and their families, and move them into a single lot, literally, and then add one or two more households, just to meet the same occupancy that they're proposing. That does not sound like the spirit of zoning for a traditional neighborhood, single-family zoning district. Some of the, I'm ad-libbing a little here at the moment because some of the comments that were made about consistent with existing patterns of development, this neighborhood is over 120 years old. These houses are not recently developed. The nine-unit building that was referred to is a barber shop and mixed-use building on the corner of Clinton Ave. It's not a new structure, so it's not consistent with anything new. This entire neighborhood, as near as I can tell, because I grew up there, has been there for a long time, long before me and before my father, who is 87 years old next month. The other thing is, we talked about amenities. There's a gas station, a 7-Eleven, Domino's, the park down the street, and a local public school, McDonald's and TD Bank. We're not talking about a nice market basket in this neighborhood. We're talking about a couple of fast food places and gas you need to get to go to work. So I'm not sure what amenities they were referring to that were any special or different to this neighborhood. They service the neighborhood, yes. But this is, as we've talked about, a very tight street, very tight, and I'm sure they photoshopped the street to take out all of the cars, as someone else has also mentioned. Many of the residents of Clinton Ave and Janast Ave have occupied their homes for a very long time. For instance, in some instances, many, many decades. Speaking for the Lassert family, we hope to continue our presence on Clinton Ave for a long time, but the decision on this matter tonight will have irrevocable consequences. Not only will it permanently reshape this small Pawtucketville neighborhood and the abutting properties, but it will also open the door for exemptions in similarly zoned neighborhoods throughout the city. While I hope to stand before this board in support of future petitions by House of Hope for a different property, I appeal to the vote, to the board, to vote no on this specific petition on the basis of the scope and fullness of the variances being requested and the impact it will have on our community. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none. Oh, excuse, strike that. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Curtis Lemay. I live at 40 Robert Street, which is about a half a mile up the road, on Mammoth Road. I don't know where I'm going to, where I was going to start tonight, but I guess with the mere fact that there are eight variances, that in itself, to me, raises a red flag. I have not walked the neighborhood, but my family has lived in Pawtucketville for over 100 years, and I know Mr. Lassert here and his daughter, as well as many others. But we've had, and I'm a member, longtime member of the Pawtucketville Citizens Council, although I'm not representing them here and I'm not on the board there, but I'm just a member. The project in question is 35 Varnameve. As far as the United Postal Service goes, that's correct, but for everyone else that's in the area, it's actually the VFW Highway, which is a state highway, Route 133, okay? And I was involved in the McDonald's when George's Restaurant was transformed to McDonald's, and I'm sorry to say that that didn't work out as far as people in this building are concerned down the road. And I'll put the homeless aside, that panhandle, and they're allowed to do it in front of their entrance, but that, you enter from Mammoth Road and exit, but you can also exit out on the highway, Varnameve. And I'll tell you, it gets pretty congested, especially if someone's coming over the brook, over the Mammoth Road Bridge to go up into McDonald's and take a left, it's right after the light. If you, the congestion is just unbelievable. You have to see it to believe it. But I think, you know, I'm not against the House of Hope housing. I mean, I, almost daily, I go up along the Merrimack River towards Tingsboro, and I can see the homeless, especially in the fall when the leaves are down there on the river, on the side, yeah. It's deplorable, it bothers me, it does. I wish there was something that we could just snap our fingers and make it go away and work with everybody, but I don't think they've worked with all the abutters to their liking, and I would like to see that. I think a postponement, at the very least, would be in order, but that's just my opinion. Again, these people have been there long-term, and they're just looking to stay there and for their relief and work with these people if need be as far as coming up with the necessary answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Good evening, ma'am.
My name's Kathy Slater, and I was at the meeting over at the House of Hope last week, and I mean, she doesn't want to listen to anybody's qualms about, you know, why we don't want it. She's going to get millions of dollars from the state, and I think she'd build it anywhere. You could mow over a cemetery and it'd be all right with her, you know what I mean? And, you know, it's, I don't think it's the right spot for it. It's going to be, I don't, it's going to look ridiculous. And then everybody else on the street, what do you think they're going to be doing? Building apartments in their backyard? I kind of doubt it. You know what I mean? They might have them within their house, but, you know, it looks like one single house. I don't think it's right.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name's Patrick Regal. I own a property on Ellis Avenue, and I went up Grant Street today, and I could barely turn around, and there was a few cars there. If there was all those cars there, I couldn't turn around, and a fire truck's never going to go up there and never make it up to the street. So, that's a fire hazard to me. Too narrow, the houses, that's an old house up on top, very narrow on one side of it, very narrow. A fire truck is never going to get through there. So, that's all I got to say about that one. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Appeals. My name's Rodney Elliott. I live at 15 Cresta Drive. I attended the last zoning Board of Appeals meeting, and I met with residents over the last couple of weeks. I actually attended the meeting that was held at the House of Hope as well, and it was, you know, it was over two hours. There was good exchange of ideas. I know some of the concerns were incorporated into the design, but the neighbors should make it clear, this is not a case of not in my backyard, because it is in their backyard, the existing facility, and there's nothing but compliments at that meeting at the House of Hope from every resident. Nobody objects to it. It's a well-run facility since they took over from, I believe, the Justice Institute, which there were, were some issues, but I just come to speak to support the neighbors because if you go down Clinton Street, you can see the congestion that exists on a daily basis. You know, that means a regress from the proposed addition or expansion isn't suitable for Clinton Street. It's a street that's in disrepair to begin with, that needs attention. There's existing sewerage issues that need to be addressed in addition, but more importantly, if you walk the site, if you walk the street, you see what neighbors have to tolerate from McDonald's, from TD Bank, from other locations, and this, while it's a good, it's a good mission, what the neighbors were looking for is, can you make it a small footprint? Can it be part of the existing structure so that it's not so onerous on the neighborhood and on that existing lot? No one questions the House of Hope. I certainly don't. I certainly understand, as a member of the Lowell Housing Authority, the need for housing in the city, and they are living, House of Hope and other organizations are living true to their mission, but the footprint or the impact on this neighborhood, whether it's vehicles driving, you know, at night and lights shining in this neighborhood, excuse me, or other, I don't want to reiterate all of the items that the neighbors have brought up, but it will have an impact on the quality of life, and I know that this is the responsibility. What impact will this have? And I think the neighbors did ask, can you, can you develop? We want to support you, but this is just too much for this neighborhood. So, I don't know if that is still possible or not, but I know that that was, of course, I, again, Pawtucketville has been very welcoming throughout the time that I served, sitting there, as well as on the, a member of the Pawtucketville Citizens Council. The expansion of the Lowell General Hospital, there were three, there were three nursing homes in Pawtucketville, one closed. Full support for Duvo Manor on both expansions. It also was home to Megan's House and other smaller, whether it's lifelinks, other group homes in the neighborhood. This is not Pawtucketville saying we're not, we don't want to be This is not Patakeville saying we're not, we don't want to be part of the solution. It's just this one in particular places great impact on this particular neighborhood, and I, I think the neighbors would like to work with House of Hope. They have been good neighbors, as well as House of Hope have been good neighbors, but this particular project and expansion, and I give, you know, the House of Hope credit. They're, they're trying to take advantage of funding that is available, but it's gotta be, it's gotta be compatible with the neighborhood. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed for the moment. We're gonna open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko, Mr. Proko, close yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And there's a lot to digest on this particular project, because, again, you have, you have, the repeating statements I'm hearing is that no one is against the House of Hope, but it's this particular project that impacts the neighborhood. I myself drove around on Clinton Street and Second Street and in the back, you know, just to get a scope of, of what people will deal with. I, I do have one question. I just wanted to make sure, and I, I think I heard it, but I think the first drawing there was going to be a gate by Clinton Street, and now when this new, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, because I only got this today and I didn't get a chance to review totally, but I believe that the fence is not coming down by, by Clinton Street entrance? Is that correct?
So in response to the concerns voiced by the neighbors at the last meeting, they've decided to not incorporate a gate there, and instead have a continuous privacy fence along that span.
Okay. But it sounds like, again, the, the size of the project is impacting the quality of life, from what I'm understanding from the neighbors, is that it's not just the privacy fence, it's also the, you know, the building itself. It's going to be eight units, and that's gonna be a lot of parking spaces, I believe, because it's two vehicles per unit, right? And I also hear concern, which I think would be the most important thing, is, is the stormwater issue, because the way the building is designed, and I, as I walk through, it seems like it's, the water would go down to Clinton Streets, and I think that, that's a major concern. So if you put a building there, and I know the engineer mentioned, you mentioned there would be some, you would be doing some mitigation on the stormwater, correct? Can you address that, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. So as a civil engineer, the first thing we do is we do on-ground survey, and we look at the topography of where the grades are going now, and we do an existing condition evaluation and determine where the water is going. Some of it's going to the street, some is going to the back, some are going to the sides. When we do our proposed design, we curb it, we put catch basins, we put piping, and we design it with an evaluation that we submit that says for all of the storm events, from one inches up to almost eight inches, there will, there will not be any runoff increase or volume increase off-site, not only in total area, but in any direction. So wherever you're standing around the site, what's happening today cannot increase later from this design, and what we're showing is an underground system away from the neighbors where everything's collected, brought away, and discharged underground. So that, that's something that we're obligated to do.
Okay, thank you. So I'm not sure if the fence will mitigate the noise impact, which I'm assuming the neighbors is concerned about while the construction's going on, and also the people that's gonna be living there. I agree with everyone here, the fact that the House of Hope does great work, and that is not disputed. It, it's, again, the location of this particular project. So just looking at what has been redesigned, it, it seems better than the last time, but again, you have a majority of people here who are concerned about the quality of life, and I think as, as, as an individual, I do have to take that into effect. The jury is still out, but I, I would like for, to get input of my other board members, only because, like I said, this, this is huge, and I, and I, I would like, you know, additional opinions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The House of Hope is an amazing organization. That is undeniable. But what also is undeniable is the House of Hope's good deeds are not the issue at hand. The services that, that your agency provides are vital to sustaining a quality of life for our most vulnerable citizens. All agree. And you've won the accolades of the CBA, CTI, Lowell House Lowell General, because they're professionals just like you. They know what you provide and how vital those services are. However, I would not characterize one's opposition to this proposed structure as being opposed to doing the public good. That's unfair. I think all would agree that the House of Hope is the shining example of exactly what the public good is. No question. What's detrimental is the density of this project and the amount of relief requested and the negative impact it's gonna have on a very congested neighborhood. And that's why I wholeheartedly support your deeds and your mission, but I cannot support your petition to build this, this dense construction project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, but before I do, I, I just am puzzled by what I'm asked to review right now. At 7:00 AM this morning, I looked online, Peter, to see what we had for documents. I, I looked last Friday to see what we had for documents. Nothing new was posted. I had no new information for tonight's hearing, and we've made it criteria that applicants providing new information should be providing members that information no later than Thursday evening prior to the hearing. And so not only do we not have the new information until, I'm seeing it for the first time tonight, I'm seeing a lot of confusion with the comments. So the Department of Planning and Development submitted comments today on the documents that was submitted today. And, and I'm hearing from Peter that you're confused by one of the variances, that it just seems like we're being asked to render a decision tonight on something that we had not given proper review of. And I think that there's confusion over what variances you require. If I look at the summary of the document today that was submitted by Planning Development, the Department of Planning and Development, it states that you're looking for a variance on minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, maximum stories, maximum height requirements, maximum front yard setback under Section 5.1, minimum off-street parking spaces under Section 6.1, the construction of more than one primary residential unit, residential dwelling structure on the lot under Section 5.2.2, relief for landscape open space requirement under Section 5.3.1, and any other relief. And then I heard tonight that, well, some of those we don't need variances for, but it's, it's new information. For instance, I think I heard tonight that we don't need a variance for landscaping, based on a plan that was in the slideshow, but we don't have that plan in front of us. We didn't even have a document that, it just seems not clear as far as what you're looking for us to render variance decisions on, number one, and it was provided very last minute for us to even try to decipher tonight, for, for me, and I think a few other members here seeing it for the first time, right? So, that being said, the neighbors had some complaints about the presentation. The sewer line goes directly out to Varnum Ave. The sewer line does not impact Clinton Street. The site access does not impact Clinton Street. No access from this development accesses Clinton Street, impacts Clinton Street. In fact, this whole development doesn't enter the Clinton Street neighborhood. And a screen from Clinton Street, the, the first floor common room, the windows won't be able to be seen from Clinton Street. The second floor, a couple of bedrooms, but they're way back from Clinton Street. And there's landscaping and a fence there that screen everything. And I do believe the view that was presented by the architect is accurate of what exactly you're gonna see looking up Clinton Street for the development before the trees grow in. And once the trees grow in, you might not see anything. And they're evergreen trees, so they're gonna stay green year round. I, I think this project has a lot of merit, and I think that a lot of steps have been taken for this project to be a viable project for a homeless or unhoused community in the city to have successful places to live. The fact that the lot is 30% larger than the nine residential units on Clinton Street, that nine residential units on Clinton Street is 22,000, I think, and the lot is over 30,000 for what we're looking to develop here. So there's a lot of pluses here. It just seems that the presentation's rushed. I, I, I kinda like it. You know, the, the whole grading thing with the cars coming down, it's only like two feet or one foot of grade, there's no headlights gonna be visible on Clinton Street through that, that six-foot private. I mean, and plus, the landscaping is gonna grow up, and you're saving trees, and you're planting trees. A lot of pluses here, a lot of pluses. But I think it needs to be continued, because I don't think, for me personally, I even understand what you're asking for. I don't think the documentation is thorough enough, because personally, I'd like to see a real, concise application documenting how you're meeting landscape, you know, open, how you're meeting these things that you think you don't need variances for, rather than just a, a slide presentation saying that you're meeting it. I mean, and then Peter's kinda winging it here with, oh yeah, they kind of, it's like too much last minute here. Is, I just want to ask the applicant, why is it rushed so much? Why, why is it such a pressure cooker?
Well, I do, I do want to say that they did send those materials in on Friday. I think the confusion is they don't know that we close at noon. I believe the email came in at like 11:57. I will admit to not checking my email over the last three minutes of the day, but I, the, the application did not, I mean, the additions did not come in this morning, they did come in on Friday. But I agree, I know what you're saying about getting them in on Thursday evening as well.
I looked this morning at 7:00 AM, nothing new was posted. That's how I got my information. That's how I've gotten my information for 11 years. This, this is not a new process, in any event, if you could just speak.
So I, I appreciate your comments, and I will acknowledge that our initial submission before the prior meeting, there was some confusion there. I think as we acknowledged during that meeting, there was a, a funding, you know, funding round, and we needed to get an application in, and there was pressure there. I, I will note that the items of relief that we've asked for actually have not changed, and, and, you know, we have, have been in contact with the planning staff and provided information, which I, I don't believe has changed, but we're, you know, certainly more than happy to provide additional information and, and answer any questions that you might have.
I'm looking at comments that were submitted today, I think it's by you, Peter, right? That's crossed out your variance for maximum stories. You don't need to worry about that anymore. So you are changing maximum height requirement, maximum stories, for instance, as far as relief that you don't need to seek anymore, correct?
I, I think the, the city was trying to help us out and, and flagged some items that we didn't need prior to the last hearing, and we were sort of trying to clarify that we do not need those.
Yeah, on my end, because usually, the way things work is usually one project is assigned to one staff member. I, I think the question was, they didn't have labeled dimensions in the attic or something, if I remember that correctly, which made it harder to calculate if it was a half-story or a full story. That's why the original variance for the story was there. And then they didn't have some of the calculations for height of the building, which those are on the updated things now. So like Jacob was saying, I had included those as a, they don't have the dimensions listed, so winging it, I'm pretty sure that they needed variances, but they've provided dimensions now that indicate that they don't need variances. The calculation of a half-story is something like, the third floor can't be more than 80% of the square footage of the second floor, and it was unclear if it was on the first set of plans, but on the second set of plans, it was clear that that doesn't exceed that threshold. But it was those kinds of things where the variances had gotten crossed out, but...
And the documents weren't provided to you to review until, really, Monday, which is today. So determining the variances required should be given little more thought and thorough review, rather than trying to rush it the day of the hearing, in my opinion. That's where I'm coming from. I think that we don't have, we don't have the proper thorough review process followed here right now without continuing this and taking the time to do it, in my opinion. That's where I'm coming from, I think. And I think the, the, the story of the project, just being clear as to how you're not impacting Clinton neighborhood by putting that six-foot fence in that evergreen planting and not having any drainage go off-site in the Clinton Street direction, but be infiltrated on-site, no sewer is going into the Clinton Street neighborhood, it's going out onto Varnum Ave. I mean, you're doing the right stuff, but I, I just heard from the neighbors that they didn't get that information. You know, and I think that Mr. Elliott even was saying that there's access onto Clinton Street, and that's not the case in the plan. So the information about what you're doing, I don't think is being circulated maybe enough for people to understand, or maybe they're not asking the right questions, I don't know, but I'm looking at the plan, I'm like, why are they saying that? Because that's not how I'm seeing the plan. I would like to see it continued. I would like to see a clear understanding as to the variances you're seeking, because you're seeking probably half of the number of variances than what we had previously And maybe just a more thorough, thoughtful understanding as to how you're impacting Clinton Street, because, again, that six-foot fence, you've got a couple of windows on the second floor that are gonna be visible from anyone on Clinton Street, and they're set back like 45 feet. And the Clinton Street neighborhood, lovely, beautiful neighborhood, by the way. I, I walked that neighborhood, and I was just, it was such a charming street. But the houses are 12 feet apart, 10 feet apart, very close, very dense, and you're like 45 feet away from their, their property. Anyway, I'm frustrated with the process, and I'd like to see us follow a more measured approach here so that I clearly understand what we're looking for. approach here, so that I clearly understand what we're looking for for variances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, it goes without saying, not only the board members, but also the members of the public have expressed that, that House of Hope, it's undeniable what the services they're doing throughout the city, so... But the question now becomes, why this project and why here? And now I am confused, as Dennis is, because of the late submission, well, I guess not late, but the submission of the new documentation, as far as what variances are needed now and what variances are not needed now. Now we're being told we don't need variances for height and maximum stories. However, the new submissions that have been presented to us do not show the elevations, what the height of the building is, what the stories are. The previous submissions show us a height of the building of 36 feet, which is well over the maximum amount, the maximum height. And also, it's debatable as to whether or not that's more than stories. So, again, like to Dennis's point, this does seem like it's being rushed, and I understand that, but I don't know what to go on by. The new submissions don't have the height on them now. You did present us with a slideshow showing that the maximum height's going to be 30 feet or something to that effect. How do I know that that's going to be, that's going to be the thing? We have to go by what's been submitted to the board, what we have before us. Right now, I've got nothing. I've got a house with three levels, going to level three at 21 feet, no height listed, no stories listed. I have to go by this. I can't, I mean, your presentation and your slide, I can go on faith, but I really shouldn't. I've got to go by what you submitted. So at the very least, the plan's got to be updated to make sure that the height is adjusted, the stories are adjusted.
Just a minor clarification is that the 36-foot is to the top of the, is to the top of the building, but I do appreciate your point, and we can certainly supplement...
But yeah, but it's still not listed on the new submissions. So again, I have to go by what, what you provided. That being said, I said it last time, I'm going to say it again, and I can't, and I appreciate, again, I know what you're trying to do, and I appreciate it. And I know that there was some attempts to try to mitigate my concerns from the last meeting, which is, your variance sought under 5.22 with regards to number of dwelling units. Again, in order to get a variance, you need to show it's a special hardship, that's for the public good, and intent of zoning is satisfied. Just giving you special hardship and public good on that, just for now. 5.22 clearly states, no more than one, number of dwellings on a lot, no more than one primary residential dwelling structure shall be built on a lot in a USF, SSF, TSF, or TTF district. And then goes, no more than six dwelling units constructed on a TMF district. The City of Lowell approved this. It seems clear that the intent is, they don't want more than one dwelling on any single-family, any zone, single-family lot. So, I understand what you're trying to say as far as the other dwelling units that are in the area being somewhat multifamily. You, these House of Hope, on their own admission, the structure that's on there is multifamily. There's seven units in there, seven families. I look at the, on the GIS, as far as the structure that's next door, 42, I believe, 49 Varnum Ave, listed as a two-family, one structure. And then going down the street, it seems to be more single families. And this is, these are all in single, traditional single-family zone. So, putting another structure there just doesn't seem to me like it's going to be, it's going to meet intended zoning. I'm sorry, that's just the way it is. Unless you can give me something else, I just don't see how the intent of zoning is being represented there. It's clear from, it's clear from the variance itself that the City of Lowell approved it, they only want one structure in the single-family zoning. I'm sorry, you're there. The building's there, putting a second structure in there, I don't think is going to fit intended zoning. Now, you do have other avenues to go by, as far as going to track in the drawing board, maybe expanding on the current structure, or, I guess, possibly going to another authoritative board within the city. I'm not going to say who, but I think we know who it is, and seeing if there's something you can do about the zone itself. But as far as I'm concerned, and again, for this project alone, I just don't see where intended zoning is going to fit in on that variance. If we want to do another continuance for updated plans or whatever, that's fine. If you want to go back to the drawing board, that's fine, I said the same thing again, I'll say that's, we can all, well and good, but I just don't see myself getting past this, the intent of zoning not being satisfied on putting a second structure in a traditional single-family lot. I'm sorry, that's just the way it is, so... But I'll listen to my other fellow board members and see where we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan, Mr. Weiss here. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to echo all the other board members, the mission of the House of Hope is a noble cause, and I don't think anybody here disagrees with that. However, there are concerns with the neighborhood, so one of my concerns, or two of my concerns, is scope and precedence. This secondary dwelling is close to three times the size of the original dwelling on-site, just looking at square footage here. So setting that precedence of adding that secondary dwelling three times the size of the original dwelling, it's something that we'd have to take into account if the neighbor wants to come up and do the same thing. I do have one question. Beyond the residence, does the House of Hope have staff on-site at the current location? And if approved, would there be an additional staff increase?
We do have 24/7 coverage on the building that's there now for the seven families emergency shelter. We would not have coverage for the apartment building, although the driveway, you know, we'd see everybody coming on and off the property, it definitely would be enhanced security to have awake staff 24/7.
Sure. On an average, how much is it, how many staff members are there?
We have one.
Just one?
Yep, seven families, one guaranteed 24/7, all awake staff.
Thank you.
Excuse me, we do have additional staff during the day when we have case management and housekeeping and food service and all that, but you can be guaranteed at least one person.
So, how large does the staff get during the day? So we're looking for a variance on parking spots. So if you're multiple staff at the same time that you have dwelling, there's no overflow parking, you can't street park, where does a staff park? There's no staff parking on this?
Yeah, we've never had an issue with parking, even with the existing parking spaces. You know, the staff might be coming in for a couple of hours to do the housekeeping and clean the bathrooms, other staff might be dropping off the food for the day, case managers might have appointments with a number of the clients, so it might be an hour and a half. The ebb and the flow, there's really been plenty of parking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. You know, I think, for me at least, this petition does have some merit. You know, I do want to say that I've been contacted by several people, and just people telling me what House of Hope does and all the great work they do, and as we all heard, they do amazing work. So, you know, people contacting me, not just tonight, but like in general, just the concerns they have, but also the amazing work, and I think even hearing the updated plans and some of the concessions that was made, I don't think were there yet. And I want to, I want to see this project go through personally. I think there's some merit, like my colleague said, Mr. McCarthy. You know, is it in the spirit of the neighborhood? No. Eight units, in my opinion, is definitely too large scale for a project in this neighborhood, because of all the various reasons people have stated. I don't want to go through all of them again. You know, I do think if the House of Hope can go back to the drawing board and really work with the neighbors, I think more of a middle ground, some concessions, I think we can come to some kind of consensus here. Is it eight units? I don't think it would be. Is it six, maybe? Is it four, maybe? I don't know. Is it three? Maybe, I don't know. And I'm not here to dictate how many units or what people build. It's just, to me, I think it's not in line in the spirit of zoning for this neighborhood, and the relief you're seeking, to me, outweighs the social impact, just the neighborhood as a whole, and then it doesn't fall in line with zoning. You know, so I'll put it back to the House of Hope. You've heard some comments in terms of continuous matter, to get some more, at least detail plans, and just a clear understanding of the variance you're seeking, and then just a more of a detailed outline and plan of the impact of Clinton Street, and the actual plans, the actual details, the high elevation, elevation and all that. So I'll put it to you, ma'am, what you want to do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and board members, we would very much like to continue this.
Sure, sure. We can, we could definitely look for a continuance. And I'm speaking for myself here. What I would like to see happen, and you do what you want to do, it's, you know, it's your project. I do feel like it's a lot of relief you're seeking. I think if you scaled down, or someone mentioned, add on to the existing structure, I think the relief, the relief you'd be seeking would be less detrimental, in my opinion. Again, I'm not a, I'm not a housing and land expert. We have a housing expert here, we have an architect, we have a lawyer, we have a lot of experts here, so I would urge you to listen to them, because as it stands presently, I would not be able to vote in favor of this petition as it is currently, but like I said, I think it does have merit. So when we like to continue this matter, and I would encourage the House of Hope just to, again, talk to the neighbors. I really feel that if you had only one or two, or, you know, people having some opposition, I think that's one thing, but you have a lot of people here in attendance, but also people who are not in attendance, that reach out to me specifically. But also, in the flip side, I've had a lot of people reach out in support of this project as well, so saying that. Mr. Trump, when's our next scheduled hearing, and how many items on the next one? I'm going to allow this, as long as my board members think it's fine. Go ahead, ma'am, you want to make a comment real quick?
Be able to grant or not grant based on the plans that are presented tonight? Can you make a decision tonight?
So that kind of goes along with the question that I was going to pose to the board. They have more experience than this with me, and maybe even Sean has seen this legally. If the proposal were to change too much, would it not have to come before the board as a different application? Because they'd be required to notify the public. Like if it wasn't a standalone building anymore with eight units, then it's not a continuance, it would be a withdrawal without prejudice, and then a new application would come before...
Exactly, and I think you have legal counsel to talk about. If this current petition is way out of the scope that you're looking to do, essentially a brand-new project, you would have to withdraw, that's your option, and then resubmit for a new application, send out their butters list and all that, the public notice and all that.
So you're not able to vote on this?
As it...
As it is?
As it is right now, we're looking to continue this, ma'am. So, not at the moment. So, Mr. Trump, so again, what's our next available, next hearing date?
The next available, available hearing date would be November 28th.
Would that hearing date of November 28th work for you, sir, and your applicant?
I'm sorry, November 14th, there's one more slot open.
Oh, November 14th. Might be too soon, but we can...
That's a little too soon, doesn't give us a whole lot of time, you know, for dialogue and thinking about some of the things you've raised today.
So would November 28th work more, or you want to pitch it to December?
28th would work for us, thank you.
Okay, November 28th. All right. Any other comments from my colleagues here, before we move to continuous? Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, I meant to raise it at the last hearing. You're front on two streets, you're frontage on two streets, you're a single lot with frontage on two streets, and you're looking to have two separate buildings.
Correct.
So, a thought is, subdivide the lot and have a separate building on each lot with a variance for frontage on Clinton Street, as a thought. I'm not saying a direction that you need to examine, it's just a thought that might help other board members feel comfortable with the solution. Anyway, that's all I have to offer.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. If there's no other further comments from my colleagues here, we'll move to a continuance for this petition to November 28th.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZVA 2022-46 for variances for House of Hope Inc. at 35 Varnum Ave, to be continued to November 28th.
I second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved, continues to November 28th.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved, continues to November 28th.
Member McCarthy.
Approved continuance to November 28th.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approved continuance to November 28th.
Member Havi.
Approved continuance.
All right, folks, you've been approved to continue to November 28th. We'll see you in a little bit. Just a notice to the public, this will be the public notice for the continuance, so if you have any interest in this matter, please show up to November 28th hearing. Moving on to our next matter, under new business, we have ZVA-2022-49, a variant, applicant is Simone Chim, property located at 119 Forest Street. Simone Chim has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals, seeking variance approval to construct in addition to a single-family home at 119 Forest Street. The subject property is located in a traditional TSF zoning district. The project requires variance relief per section 5.1 from minimum front yard setback and maximum floor FAR requirements, and any other relief required on law ordinance. Good evening, sir. You want to tell us a little about your project?
Good evening, zoning board. I'm here for, just request for extend to build a sunroom for kids, because right now I have like a small living room, and the reason why, I'm just put like, just an extra living room for the kids, like a sunroom or something. And then according to my property side, I don't know, is it possible to extend it, or maybe any impacts to any property, or whatever, that's all I can comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. If that's all you have, we'll open up to the public, and then we'll probably have questions later.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, thank, thank you, sir. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, seeing none that portion of public hearings closed? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none that portion of public hearings closed? We're gonna open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It appears as though our dedicated staff here believes that the relief requested is minimal, and has no major concerns with respect to the petition, with perhaps the question with respect to the proposed driveway. So, how are we handling the driveway?
The driveway, it depends on the board. If the, the board decide, want me to move in, I can adjust it to make it work for the driveway.
So it's your intention that all the vehicles will park on the property?
Yes.
Without encroaching upon the, the cityway?
No.
That's good stuff.
Yes.
I can vote in favor of that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have a couple of questions, but the site plan that was submitted clearly indicates that your property line, it looks like it's probably maybe 10 feet from the existing curb, edge of pavement of South Wilder Street. So unless you drive very small vehicles, which I've been by your property, and I've noticed that they're not that small, you, you would need to relocate your sunroom, or change the dimension of the sunroom, in order to accommodate the parking completely on your lot. Right now, you're looking for a nine-foot, 19.2-foot wide sunroom, you'd probably have to shrink that down to about 15 feet, just to get a full parking space of 18 feet. Is that your intention? Because you just stated that you can accommodate a full parking space on your lot. Do you understand my question?
I understand your question. Like I mentioned, if the board can make it approve for my request, I can make adjust, adjust the, the parking spot to make it meet the standard.
Then, what you're saying is that you'll change the dimension of your sunroom to something closer to 15 feet versus 19 feet, is that correct?
No, we can shrink the sunroom, because the, the limit from the, the neighbor is about 15 feet. So it's from the neighbor is gonna be the same, but from the parking lot, it's gonna be, example, like from 19 feet, 19.2 feet, it's gonna shrink down a little bit, example, like three more feet, or four more feet, it, it depend on the board approval.
So if we made a condition that you would revise the plans to show a parking space no less than 18 feet deep, would you be agreeable to that condition?
Yes.
I hope you understand what I'm saying, but I'm, I'm a little worried that you don't recog, your sunroom is changing characteristics, correct?
So the sunroom was about this big, on, on the, on the backyard side. The engineering, I think he sent me the picture as well, according to this picture here. So if the parking spot doesn't meet the requirement, so I can move, I can shrink down, cut down a sunroom, to building like, like the width about 19.2 to 16.2, whatever, just, just open more parking spot, yeah.
You got it. That's what we're asking, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I think we're all on the same page.
Yes.
So I'd like to propose a condition that we, that you provide a revised site plan that shows the parking space no less than 18 feet deep, and revised dimension of the sunroom. Is that okay?
Yes.
If my fellow board members support that, then I think I can support this as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chair, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I mean, the project makes sense, and DPD seems to be in, in agreement with it. My concern was with the parking, but if you are in agreement with proposal, proposed condition, as Dennis has alluded to, then I can, I can be on board with this project, so, thank you, wish you the best of luck.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. With those conditions, I don't have a problem with this. Your frontage is Forest Street, correct?
Yes.
Front of your house, and you have on-street parking on Forest Street?
Uh, I don't have it.
You, you don't park in front of your house on Forest Street?
No, no park, no parking on the property on the Forest Street, it's just on the, the street only. But I have the side, on the side of my house, is about like, more than 15 feet, but it's not, they have a curve, if I want to park on the side, I have to request another variant to, to see the walkway, and then ram it to the, the parking on the side. Probably in the future, I would do that.
Right, but if needed, could you park in front of your house, on the street, on-street parking?
Yes.
Okay.
But normally, normally I never park on the street, I just park on the South Wilder Street, and it's kind of like a safe, and then nothing border, because South Wilder Street is a quiet street, close to the school, and not too many cars ride around, even a school bus just ride on the other street. And my kid, sometime I just go play basketball outside, either parking lot.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hovey. Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo my fellow board members, I, I think with the condition, I can support this, it's, doesn't seem like it's detrimental to the neighborhood, he's just expanding for his family, so, and it's within the guidelines of, of what he's looking for, so I would be in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Mr. Chim, like my colleague said, I think the relief you're seeking, sir, is, is very minimal, and you're agreeable to the conditions that we talked about.
Yes.
You know, it makes sense what you're trying to do, the disaddition for parking, and-
Yes.
You know, just expand for you and your family, totally understandable, especially with New England weather, that totally makes sense. So I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, if we have no other comments from the board, we'll move to a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZVA 2022-49 for variances for 119 Forest Street, for variances for relief, for minimum front yard setback and maximum floor area ratio, with the condition that the existing parking be expanded to no less than 18 feet deep, and revised site plan to be provided to show that change.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by the vice chair, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve with conditions.
All right, sir, you've been approved with conditions, wish you the best of luck. Thank you for coming out this week, thank you for waiting, I know it was a long wait, so thank you.
Right, thank you so much.
Have a good night, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Going on to our next agenda item, under new business, we have ZBA-2022-50, the petition is a variance, the applicant is John Pratt Jr., property located at 29 Ottawa Street. Mr. Pratt has applied to the Low Zone Board of Appeals for variance approval in order to split the existing lot at 29 Ottawa Street into two lots. The proposed lot two will contain existing single-family home, and the applicant intends to construct a new single-family home on the proposed lot one. The subject property is located in the traditional single-family zoning district. Proposed lot two requires a variance relief per section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area, minimum lot per dwelling unit, and minimum floor area ratio FAR requirements, and any other relief required in the low zone ordinance. Proposed lot one does not require variance relief. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Attorney Patman Flood, Flood Law Office, 549 Rogers Street in Lowell. I'm here today to request a variance approval to subdivide an existing lot containing a single-family home, two separate lots identified as property lot one and property lot two on the submitted plan. Today, here with me tonight is John Pratt and Perry Davie. The applicant will also need to get approval from the Conservation Commission. The subdivision of the lots will enable the applicant to construct a single-family home on proposed lot one, and allow his son to occupy the existing home on proposed lot two. The property is located in a traditional single-family zone. Proposed lot one will meet minimum dimensional requirements for a single-family home in the TSF district when constructed. The proposed lot two requires variance approval pursuant to section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling, and maximum floor area requirements. A review of the records of the City Assessors Office indicates that the surrounding homes on the same side of Ottawa Street as the proposed lot two are located on lots of similar size, some are smaller and some are larger than the proposed lot two. The lots range from 2,778 square feet to 10,870 square feet. The proposed lot two contains 5,304, which is actually larger than most of them. Under section 11.2.3 of the City of Lowell zoning ordinance, Board of Appeals is authorized to grant a variance from zoning ordinances only if each of the following conditions precedent exists. Special hardship, public good, intent of zoning is satisfied. Due to the lot being, or proposed lot one being located within the 100-foot buffer zone, the applicant moved the lot line closer to proposed lot two to allow for the construction of a single-family home, in compliance with the City of Lowell zoning, and in compliance with conservation. The public good, the relief the applicant is requesting can be, can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The approval of the variance is in line with the intent of the zoning ordinance, will allow the applicant to reside in the City of Lowell while providing suitable housing for his son, will provide a benefit to the city by creating another home, which will be additional tax revenue. It's consistent with the city's master plan, and will enhance the neighborhood.
Thank, thank you, Counselor, for your presentation.
I have signatures by people who support the petition.
Oh, yeah, you want to, yeah, we'll take them. We'll submit this for the public record, for the record, I think I saw 10, 10 neighbors and abutters in support of this project, so just for the public record, and we'll submit, submit this document for the record as well, Mr. Trump. Attorney Flood, if that's, that's it, okay. We'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, seeing none that portion of public hearings closed? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Opposition, opposition, seeing none that portion of public hearings closed? We'll open up questions and comments to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question on this abutter, this list of residents that support the petition, they're not meant to be residents that live in the neighborhood.
Some of them do live in the neighborhood, others are just residents of the City of Lowell who are in support of the petition.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. McCarthy.
I, I just saw one from the old street that I used to grow up on, and I know that's not in the neighborhood, like, okay, that one's a stretch, but I understand. Well, I, I think that this proposal meets the criteria for variance, and I, I think I can support this. I kind of wish we had plans for the new structure, because typically when we receive these applications, we do have plans, but you are making a statement that the new structure will meet all requirements for setbacks and coverage.
That is our intent right now. If we don't, we will be back in, in front of the board to get additional-
I hate that. That's what I don't like.
I do have, the plan is to construct a ranch, and right now, based on working with that hammer, everything seems to kind of fit. We do have to go to conservation due to-
All right.
-the 100-foot buffer, so things may change, and that was kind of why we didn't want to come in and say, this is exactly what we're gonna build, because we might have to move things, or shrink the house, or change things.
But the intent is to have a ranch, so that's a larger footprint, so you are really kind of making all the pieces and parts play out to the maximum extent possible, okay?
That was the intent, yes. I have, I have a copy of a ranch that was being proposed, I also have a copy of the plan that was filed for conservation, showing- opposed lot, just want to make sure I give them the right one.
That's kind of what I was expecting, okay. Wow, lucky son, is this your house, is this for, wow. Okay, all right. Are, are you moving into the new structure, or is the son living in the-
We would be moving into the new structure, my son would be living in the-
Okay.
Yeah. We were lucky enough, sorry, John Pratt, 29 Ottawa Street, we were lucky enough seven years ago to buy the house that my wife grew up in.
Oh, fun.
So we're, we're looking to utilize the additional land, build a new house for ourselves, and then hoping that my son will, will move in and, and raise his family there as well, so.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Beautiful, okay, all right. I, I have no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chair, Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this, this makes, this makes total sense, I mean, it's on a dead-end street, the property, you know, you still have to go to ConCon to, as far as dealing with that, preservation part of it, which I'm sure will be very successful, so I don't see any issues with this, so, and I wish you the best of luck, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I looked at the plans, and the lots seemed to, to line up with the, the rest of the neighborhood, I don't have any issues with this.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, again, I can only echo your words, this project seems well within line, I, I don't have any issues, I, it's a beautiful piece of land, and it's pretty quiet on that street by that wall over there, so, you won't have neighbors complaining about noise, so, yeah, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, the requested relief doesn't deviate from the existing neighborhood character, it'll fit neatly, and I would love it if one of my kids could live next door- It'll fit neatly, and I would love it if one of my kids could live next door. I'm not so sure that they would choose to do that, but I would love them to live there. That'd be great. Be good on your back, too, when shoveling time comes. Yeah, you got, I know what you're thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Attorney Flood, to you and to your client, I think this is a great kind of use of the lot in the subdivision, and it completely fits in line with the characteristic of the neighborhood. Again, I think from my perspective, something like this is perfectly what's appropriate, in line with zoning and intent of zoning. Something like this, this is where we relief should be seeked, and, you know, something like this, to me, makes so much sense if more applicants were something, you know, something manageable like this. I'm sure you could have did a very grand project, but this is very, you know, in line with the neighborhood and the characteristics, so I appreciate that. I know my colleagues do. And again, I think it fits in very well, so I have no concerns. So if my colleagues have no other further comments, we'll move to a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZVA 2022-50 for variances at 29 Ottawa Street for variances for relief under Section 5.1 for minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum floor area ratio requirements for proposed Lot 2, and I guess that no relief required for proposed Lot 1.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prokop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you and your, and your client the best of luck, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Moving on to our next scheduled agenda item under new business. We have a variance. The applicant is Samuel Borba, property located at 85 Seneca Street. Mr. Borba has applied to the Low Zoning Board of Appeals for variance approval to cut the existing granite curb at 85 Seneca Street. The property is located in the traditional two-family TTF zoning district and requires variance under Section 6.1.10 to exceed the maximum curb cut and any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Is the applicant here on Zoom?
I saw his representative log into Zoom earlier.
Yeah, yeah, my name is Johnny. I'm representing Mr. Borba. Due to, the house is a, is a fairly big house, 5,000 square feet, and we only have two driveways at the property due to street congestion, so there's not a lot of parking on the street. So we are applying to a driveway cut to allow us to have extra spaces into the property and eventually freeing a little bit the parking issues on the street. So that's, that's the main reason.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for that presentation. You have no further comments. We'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, seeing none that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none that portion of public hearings closed. We'll open up questions or comments to the board now. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chair, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little confused on what you're trying to do here. I understand you're trying to open up the curb cut, I'm guessing, to put in an extra driveway. Is that what the, is that what the plan is?
That's correct, yes.
But you got a driveway already with, it looks like, a two-door garage. So what's, what's the need for an extra driveway when it looks like you have a driveway that can, with two garages, that can probably handle two cars, and then the outside driveway, which can handle two more cars? Why the need for, to take away green space to put in a third, a second driveway?
Basically, we, I, we have a few trucks, I mean, to, that we use the driveway outside, and the garage is being used for storage. So, so we basically only have two car parkings currently for that property. So, so if we get, if we are successful with this variance, we would allow the house to have at least another two or three car, car parkings on the side of the house, which is a big lot. So it's an empty, empty space that's not being used for anything. So that would allow, you know, this congestion to be minimized on the street, too.
Okay. Just, it's just unclear from what we have here as to what the intention really is. And the plan itself was, I mean, it's a plot, certified plot plan, but it doesn't, doesn't really give too much, too many detail. Doesn't even say what the length of the proposed, even though you're looking for a 10-foot curb cut, which I guess you're trying to put in a new driveway, it doesn't even show what the length of that driveway is. So that's an issue. I'm not sure why we should be, how we can variant, put a variance, grant the variance to put in a new driveway without knowing what the length of that driveway is going to be, but I don't know. I'll listen to my other fellow board members to see what their thoughts are, but I reserve, I mean, I reserve the right to comment again, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The Chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
I have nothing to add on this.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The Chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it was a little bit. I understand the, the end, the end game of this is that you're trying to create extra space. You said, you said it's to add additional vehicles into your driveway, right? How many trucks do you have? Is it commercial trucks or residential trucks?
It's commercial trucks, two trucks, yeah, two pickup trucks, yeah. And then we have a boat as well, so that is another reason for me to add the extra space on the side of the house for Mr. Borba, actually.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, I'm not, I'm a little confused, but... Yeah, I think, I think I need some more information. I'm not sure if I fully get why he has to... Let's see. Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll defer right now. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm not sure I can fully support this right yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The Chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the applicant for coming before us and asking for relief. As I go around the city, even on my own street, I see people, neighbors, adding pavement, taking away green space, pulling up trees, and parking boats and trucks without asking for relief. And the fact that you're here in front of us doing the right thing, I want to thank you for doing that, because it's the right thing to do, and we should have a conversation about what it does to the property and what it does to the neighborhood. We should have a complete plan, which shows the extent of your parking area that I think you allude to will be gravel, so that you'd have two trucks and a trailer parked on a gravel pad that'd be accessed off of Seneca Street. You potentially could access that off your existing driveway, but you're coming before us looking for a more straightforward access, so you don't have to move a car every time you need to have access to your trucks or your trailer. Makes a lot of sense, I think. And like I said, too many times in the city, I see people not coming before us and going ahead with pavement, and it just happens. So I, I think, for me, I can support something if it's better understood what we're doing here, but I would like to see a couple of improvements, namely, street trees. As we add pavement to any of these green spaces, and we lose green space, we increase heat island effect. This neighborhood doesn't suffer as badly as other neighborhoods in the city, but still, it does influence hotter conditions for other neighbors. So I'd like to see a condition if we go forward with this, not that that's something we do tonight, because I still think we need a clearer picture for where that gravel edge is, that we, condition adding street trees. And then also that the new paved area or parking area remains as an impervious surface, i.e., gravel, or pervious asphalt, or concrete, or pavers, but not something that would influence the drainage problems with additional pavement. So those are two things that I'd like to see us get to, but I think we need to see a plan that illustrates the extent of the parking area that you're looking to do, because right now, all we have in front of us is this rather small, 10-foot-wide curb-cut hatched area that goes through the wall, and then a word landscaped area that I think is where you're intending to park your trucks and your trailer. So if that's clear, I'd like to see a revised plan, so that we can understand the extent of the area that's being lost that's not landscaped anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. You know, to me, I know what you're trying to do with the curb cut, ultimately trying to get more space and more parking and all that and storage. You know, I think the relief you're seeking is, it's nothing too strenuous on the, on the property or even the neighborhood, so I don't see a major concern. So, sir, if, if you have no other comments with, with the conditions that we talked about, Mr. McCarthy just talked about, we'll go forward with a vote.
Yep, yep. It will be gravel, so that's, that's, that's on the schedule. The size, yes, we didn't address that. It will be big enough to get at least three cars there. It's not going to take a lot of space, and all the landscaping area that you see there is a green area with a few trees. I don't see much effect on environmental on this. Again, it's up to the, the decision is up to the House. I understand that. So that's all I have to comment.
Can you clarify?
Yeah, can?
Can you clarify, sir? You said there's going to be size for three cars there. Are you just a, are you referring to you're including the two cars in the existing driveway and new driveway? You're, you're saying that the new driveway you want to put in is going to fit three cars?
Well, it's, it's going to fit three cars, because if we have to use the trailer for the boat, it needs to be a little bigger, but it's really for two cars there. But we will extend a little bit in order to, to be able to move a boat, a trailer into the side of the house. That's, so, so it will be a total of two cars that we already have, and another two cars, I would say three cars, that will be added to the side of the house. That's to accommodate the trailer. So one car and a trailer, a truck pulling a trailer, or two cars.
All right. Thank you for the information, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just can I have a quick question?
Yeah, Mr. Prokop, go ahead, sir.
Mr. De Silva, are you going to cut down any of those trees that's in your yard right now?
Not at all. Nope. The landscape is going to remain the same. The only, the only thing is the gravel and, you know, and the space for the cars. Right now, in that area, we only have grass. We don't have any trees around that area, bushes, but the bushes will stay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Any, any other comments or questions for my colleagues?
I'd just like to suggest, three, Mr. Chairman, that one of the conditions would be to add street trees along Seneca Street, up to two street trees. By the way, Mark Ghenn, G-H-E-N, from the DCR, can provide those trees free of charge, I believe, in this neighborhood as well. And so it's a contact that you can get through DPD, and you could have those beautiful street trees installed next spring. As a gateway city, we're entitled through the DCR program to have street trees. So I'd like to suggest as a condition that we see two new street trees here as well. Even though the gravel is impervious, it still raises the temperature versus green space, and having trees to shade that would go a long way to helping mitigate heat island effect in this neighborhood. So the two conditions I'd look for is the addition of two street trees, as well as the condition that the parking surface remain pervious, as in gravel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Sir, are you in agreeance with those two conditions that we just mentioned?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one more condition, just to go?
Yes.
So it clear, because I'm still a little confused. The new parking area that's being created, only one vehicle can be on that parking area, because I'm still a little confused as to how this is all laying out. Okay. But I didn't have a revised, revised site plan either as a condition, so. Okay. All right. Never mind.
Okay. So those, one more condition, sir, a revised site plan, just to indicate limits of the gravel area. Are you in agreeance with those three conditions, sir?
Yep, agreed.
Okay.
Does it, it needs to be done by a certified surveyor, or can it, can it be done on, by an, or by a drafter?
All site plans have to be certified, right, Dylan? I mean, Peter? Yeah. Sorry, sorry.
So, yes, it has to be a certified site plan, sir.
That's okay.
I saw Dylan's name on the comments. Sorry about that, Peter.
All right. All right. If there's no further comments or questions, we'll move to a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZVA 2022-51 for variance at 85 Seneca Street to provide a variance under Section 6.1.10 to exceed maximum curb cut and any other relief required with the following conditions that the applicant provide up to two street trees along Seneca Street, that the applicant use pervious material for the parking area, and that the applicant provide a revised site plan showing the extent or limits of the gravel area.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve with conditions.
All right, sir, you've been approved with conditions. Wish you the best of luck in your project.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and have a good evening, sir.
You too.
Thank you. Moving on to other business on the agenda. Another business at 545 Broadway Street, we have a variance extension. Alessia Romallo has applied for an extension of variance granted to this property on October 28, 2021. The project- The project has been delayed due to the increased cost of material and labor. Is the applicant here on Zoom or?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Good evening, sir.
Yes, I'm on Zoom also, but I'm having a problem. I don't have a Google Chrome and I don't have sound, it's just image. Yeah, we apply, I'm applying for a variance during the foundation, labor and material costs. We couldn't get funds from the bank right now because it's just a budget way higher than the build's going to work after the build. So we're applying for variance, so we should get more time and hopefully things, prices come down. So we try and sell the project with the building right now so someone interested to take over that project.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Since this is a variance extension, we don't have to open to the public, right? Do we? I'm just going to open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, in favor, in favor, seeing that portion of property is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition, in opposition, opposition, seeing that portion of property is closed. We'll open up questions, comments to the board. The chair organizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, chair is yours, sir.
I have no questions for this.
Thank you, sir. Chair organizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any issues with granting an extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it clear. I think the variance extension is six months and I believe we only have the ability to extend it once. So we'll be providing a variance extension for, excuse me? Okay.
Yeah, I was told that, yeah, I know. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
I was told that, you know what I mean? I was going to ask and Peter explained to me is one time, six months.
Great. Okay. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page because I think in the past we've not been as clear with that condition, with that situation. So I am looking favorable upon this with that understanding that it's six months and just the one extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chair, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Generally speaking, I don't think I'm opposed to the extension. I do have some questions, though, as far as the original granting of the petition. There were several conditions that were set forth back in 2021 when this was approved previously, looking at the decision that's on, that's recorded with the registry of deeds. Applicants shall resubmit their landscaping plan that shows street trees removed. Has that been done?
Yes, we did everything with infiltration, the water, the drainage filtration system. We took care there, the light outside the building, everything was addressed.
Peter? Oh, thank you, sir. I'm asking the DPD whether they received anything.
I'd have to check the building files. This is a project managed by a staff member that's moved over to the other side of DPD now, so I don't know off the top of my head, but.
All right. Well, DPD doesn't have the record at this point right now, but sir, let me just continue to ask you. Applicants shall obtain stormwater permit from the Lowell Regional Water Waste Water Utility. Has that been accomplished?
Yes, that's been finished. I've been, we have the sign from Mike Stewart and John Katie, I think, and the other guy, I don't remember his name.
Okay. The only other comment was regarding engineering memos with comments from the engineering department, which I don't have in front of me, so I'm not going to ask you about those because I don't know what those are. But again, I'm generally not opposed to the six-month continuance. I will say that I understand the concerns with the recent pandemic and now supply chain issues, but the, I understand what the concerns are, but this time maybe, but just for public, for the course of the public, I'm not sure if that's an excuse I would probably be considering. But for this time, I will put that aside, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Sir, you know, I don't have any concerns with an extension. I just, I do want to remind you, sir, that it is just a one-time, we talked about it, a one-time extension for six months. So you're looking at your project to be done by May or June or something like that, so.
We will do what we try to.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and I totally understand with the economics and the economy and the labor and the cost and material and all that, everything's been a little tricky too. And I'm not opposed to it. I do wish you the best of luck. Again, I just want to remind you that if you don't get this done by the extension date, the variance will be lapsed and you're going to have to come back in like two or three years. So it's dependent, it's very vital that you get the project up and going, hopefully done by the summertime, by the end of the deadline for the extension, if you grant it. But again, I have no issue with granting the extension. If we have no further comments or questions by my colleagues, we'll move to a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for 545 Broadway Street for a variance extension.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prokop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve of extension.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve of extension for six months.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the variance extension.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve of extension.
Member Hovey.
Approve the extension.
All right, sir. You've been approved. Wish you the best of luck and good luck with your project.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
You're sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Moving on into other business. At 459 Broadway Street, we have a minor modification. Farid Ghah has applied for my modification to the special permit granted to 459 Broadway Street. The original special permit allows four cars to be sold on a lot at any given time. The applicant is seeking to raise this amount. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good.
Thank you so much for hearing me out. I've been doing business for 14 years in Lowell. I'm really happy to be here, really happy to serve the people around selling them good quality cars. Haven't, never been to court for selling a bad car. I have a great reputation. You guys gave me the opportunity in 2008 and gave me the dealer license for the first time and since my business has been growing, I'm so happy for it, I'm so thankful for it. I would like to ask you guys to approve and give me, if that possible, a bigger license so I can grow my business bigger and live better.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favors petition?
Yes, I'm ready.
In favor? In favor? All right. Seeing that portion of property is closed, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? 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 All right. Seeing that portion of property is closed. Roll one of questions, comments to the board. The chair organizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ghah?
Jeha, yeah.
Jeha, Jeha. So the minor modification you're looking for here, special permit, it says here that the original permit was allowed four cars to be sold.
Yes.
And is that, does that include cars on premises? Is that?
That doesn't include cars for repair, like for garage. That's four cars without license plate to be sold.
Okay.
Like four cars with stickers and flags and stuff like that.
Okay. I'm sorry if I ask you to speak a little louder only because this is very noisy on this side here, but. So you are looking, you're seeking to raise the amount to how many?
I had a gas station, a smoke shop, and a repair shop in the same location. A few years back, I closed down the convenience store because we were getting robbed and breaking in so many times. And then I closed down the garage in 2020. I lost my employees. Three months ago, I closed down the gas. I couldn't afford buying gas no more. So what I did, I bought more cars and I had more cars. I have, I would like to have anywhere between 25 and 30 if possible. I'm not going to be greedy, but I'm trying to do the best if possible.
Thank you. You said you've been there since 2008?
2008, I used to own the gas station on Chancery Street, Gary BP. Then I moved out of there to Broadway Street in 2010, October of 2010. I've been in Lowell since '08.
So, but you've had this, what is this, the right way, is that?
Right price.
The right price?
Yes.
I think I remember when you first opened up.
Did you buy a car of me?
I did. Well, I bought gas at the time.
Oh, really? That's good.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Peter, I don't know, is there a restriction on the amount because it says here the original was four spaces and now he's asking for 25 to 30?
It would have to depend. So we don't have like a site plan for the site. So at the very least, we would need a site plan so that we could calculate how many cars could fit on the site. So under the zoning right now, he's only allowed two cars per bay and there's two bays on the property. I have a staff member, May Bond, who is the zoning enforcement agent. She's on Zoom right now, but her microphone is not working, so she's typing some stuff to me. So this property was ticketed because they can't be selling more than four cars on the lot. There's probably more than 30-ish right now. And so we told him that the pathway to go forward is to change the terms of the special permit so that they don't keep getting ticketed, basically.
Excuse me. Previously, I guess they gave me the four cars because I had multiple businesses in the same location, the garage, the store, and the gas. But as of now, none of them is running. The gas is completely shut, the convenience store, it's an office, and the garage, it's only for washing cars and cleaning cars. And one more last thing. I can get you approved. I have no problem. The station fits anywhere between 40 and 45 cars comfortably, can open up the doors easily, and they're not like side to side. I wish I can go that big, have 45. I cannot afford it, but whatever you guys judge it.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Thank you, Peter. Yeah, when I drove by yesterday, I took a picture because I saw a lot of cars and I'm saying, okay.
Nice cars.
There was, there was only a permit for four.
I have four employees. They all have kids. I would hate to fire. I mean, during COVID, I did not let no one go. Only one person went to Jeffy Loop. He got a huge raise, but the rest, I didn't let them go nowhere. So I would hate to see any one of them going home.
Yeah.
And one more last thing. Patrick.
Peter.
Peter, sorry. He knows I've been trying to relocate inside the city. And as a matter of fact, this morning, they offered me a property on Pottequod Boulevard. I was asking him if that's, if I can move there and he's like, the zoning is not correct. And I was trying to purchase Pottequod Street, 735, across the street from Carmen. I worked on that location for a good six months trying to buy it. Didn't go through. So I've been doing my best to move out of there. I don't want to stay there for the longest time, but at least for now, I would like to, you know, continue, you know, serve my customers, make money in a legit way.
Yeah. Okay.
So basically, if we were trying to max out the number of cars there, DPD would need a site plan so we could do all the dimensional calculations because, you know, I don't know exactly what zone this is off the top of my head, but a parking space has to be roughly eight by 18. There'd have to be a drive lane and for a dealership, there has to be one customer space per every 15 cars. So we'd have to crunch the numbers on that. So I'm not sure what the maximum would be. It would definitely be a lot more than four, I would imagine, but I don't have a site plan to do that right now.
Yeah. So maybe we should make that a condition to, you know, to continue and he can, you know, get a site. All in all, I understand your intention. I mean, you're trying to keep a business running and it obviously, you know, the city wants businesses to progress and to make money. But again, within the guidelines, I mean, definitely four cars, your initial permit is way below. So it makes sense you wanting more, but let's get a site plan and any other information that we would need before the board.
I'll be happy to do so.
To come forward. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It sounds as though you're doing your due diligence to grow your business and I want to help you in any way I can. It's just that the way that this current petition is structured, we're unable to provide the amount of help that you're seeking. If you work, if you work with the DPD staff and our code enforcement officer and get the pre-recorded, the required site plan, I think we're going to be able to grant you some help and hopefully grow your business.
Thank you.
So as long as you're agreeable to do that.
Sure.
It's probably going to require another visit here and, but I think in the end, it'll be to your benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I agree with my fellow board members. I think we do need to understand, you know, maybe it's 50 cars that can fit in there. I don't know, but we have to do a site plan and just understand the characteristics of the lot and what makes sense to fit there. Maybe you remove a few things that are in the way. Are the gas islands still there?
I rent the place, so the landlord, he doesn't want to take the gas pumps out.
Okay.
And believe me, I'm trying in every way possible to move out of there, but I don't want to leave the city. I mean, I worked hard to build my name. Like, I'm making it long story short, like as of now, I don't have to talk no more to sell a car. Like people, they know who I am. They just come in, they take a car, the car's sold. I cannot start all over again like anywhere else and gain the reputation all over. So I would like to stay here.
I'd like to see street trees as we required on the previous application that was just granted a condition or extension. And again, DCR, Marken, G-H-E-N, provides them free. You just have to say that you'll take care of them for, I think, a period of two years or something. But when you're redoing the site plan, I'd like to see some street trees provided on this, just so that we can start to mitigate the heat island effect from all that pavement on that site.
To be honest with you, there is no way. I wish I can put trees. It's all asphalt, but what I can do, I can put like flowers in between each car.
No, they cut the sidewalk open.
The sidewalk, really?
And install them.
I would love to.
And all you have to do is say yes, you will take care of them.
I would love to do so.
Yes. So just a point of reference, that's something that as a gateway city, we're entitled to here in the city with DCR.
I will make sure that you will see the most.
Thank you.
Two beautiful trees on my sidewalk.
Maybe three or four.
Five, and I'll decorate them for Christmas.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I like to see this continued, to see the site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chair, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, sir, I mean, I got to commend you on, you know, you have a business here in the city of Lowell that you, for several years, looks like you're working. And I understand things sometimes don't go the way they are, but you are adapting to do the best you can. And I understand things sometimes don't go the way they are, but you are adapting to do the best you can to keep things going. And I commend you on that for, I mean, a lot of people would just give up and be like, all right, I'm going, I'm going away and that's it. But I certainly definitely commend you on that. I agree with my fellow board members about the fact we're probably going to need a new site plan, but my take on this is it's completely different. First and foremost, the special permit was granted over 20 years ago, 2001. And the purpose of the special permit appears at that time was not, was your main focus on the business being service station, convenience store, with you want to, on the side, sell a few cars here and there. And it looks like at the time you asked for five to 10, they granted you four. At least you need more of a side deal, which is fine. I mean, it's okay. But we are now 20 years later. I understand the service station and the convenience store unfortunately didn't work out, but you're adapting and doing the best you can. But now, if we're just going to totally change this to now it's going to be selling cars, I have some concerns about public notice on this and whether or not we need to, if you need to apply for a, actually apply for a whole new special permit just for that purpose. Because I just, I just can't see this as a minor modification because it seems like we're turning, we're reversing everything from what was granted back in 2021, 2001. And even if we thought this is a minor modification and granted, granted some relief or whatever, someone in the public who wasn't aware of it coming back to City Hall and not being happy because they're like, wait, wait a minute, why? Why are they now selling cars, selling all these cars? It was supposed to be a gas station.
Hundred percent.
Or a service station. So my suggestion is, I mean, I'm, I just, I just don't see I can find this to be a minor modification. I think you have to file for a new special permit, file, file an application for a special permit, provide notice to the public. The chances are, there's probably not going to be anybody who's going to, you know, maybe, probably not care, but I don't know. That's the thing. There may be someone. So my hope is it's probably not, but.
Two of my neighbors, they were supposed to come with me.
Well, I kind of, I guess it kind of would have been a little bit beneficial, but this, the notice provision goes out, was it 300, was it 300 feet, 500 feet, Peter, something to that effect? 300, 300 feet. So yeah, your budding neighbors probably wouldn't have no problem, but there may be someone else in the general area that may, may not have an issue. So that's my, that's my take on this. But I'll see whatever the wishes of the board are. But I think, I think we need, you need to, I think we need to do this the other way, do it right.
No problem.
At least it's up on the board, up on the level of, you know. And the public gets, the public's aware, they know we'd have, I mean, even from what the board's talking about around right now, if it was a continuous, we'd have another hearing on this, but there'd be really no public notice of it. So that's, I think, that's my suggestion, so. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The chair organizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
I have nothing to add on this.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Sir, I do think this modification you're asking for, it totally makes sense to me. You know, the landscape of your business, you know, it's a service store, a grocery store, a gas station, all that, and then also selling cars on the side. You know, I do agree with my colleagues in terms of we need a site plan. But I think even with the bigger picture, Mr. Callahan, the vice chair, he's an attorney, he's a lawyer. So he, you know, I think he's someone, at least from my perspective, we have to really just look into this in terms of this is actually a minor modification request or you need a whole new permit and application and we have to send out the notice to the butters and the public notice and all that. It's just due process, do things the right way. And I think you heard everyone here tonight, sir, we want to support you, support your business. I'm glad, I'm sure my colleagues are glad that you want to stay in Lowell and you don't want to move somewhere else. I think years ago, my brother bought a car from you, but this is over a decade ago. So like you said, you're very established in the community. So I would like to, like you said, I and I think the board would like to see you here. We just got to do things the right way and do the process and everything. So what we're going to do right now, sir, is we'll probably, we'll continue this matter. And then I defer to the vice. Maybe do you want to get?
I mean, I think, why don't, Peter, I mean, you can assist him on that. I mean, we continue with, worst case scenario, he just files, he just files an application for a special permit, withdraw the, withdraw the minor modification, and then we just go that route. I think that, just so we're at least accomplishing something, you know, so. I'd hate to ask the law department, is?
Application. You, sir, work with DPD, you know, Mr. Katrumbis, and we'll go from there.
Sure. Thank you guys for your time.
Of course, thank you, sir.
Good night.
If there's no further comments or questions from my colleagues, we'll move to a motion, Mr. McCarthy.
If I could just ask, there's room on the 14th for this to be continued to the 14th, I believe? I think we determined that on 35, I remember that there was room. All right, so we'll continue it to the 14th at the moment, okay. Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for 459 Broadway Street, minor modifications to be continued to November 14th.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Vice Chair, Ms. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Continue to November 14th.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Continue to November 14th, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Continue to November 14th, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approve continuance.
Member Prokop.
Approve continuance to November 14th, 2022.
Member Hovey.
Approve continuance.
All right, sir, you've been approved for continuance. Please work with DPD and we'll go from there, okay?
Thanks again.
All right, thank you for staying. I know it was a long night. We appreciate it, sir. We'll see you in a little bit. Okay, thank you. Have a good night, sir. Moving on into other business, we have the minutes for approval for October 13th, 2022. Any comments, edits, revisions by my colleagues?
I just have one. I had made a request about a month ago for the meeting minutes to track the outstanding administrative reviews that we have. I think it's probably four or five projects. Do we have any update on when we'll be able to see that on the meeting minutes?
I need to check with Fran. I remember it coming up, but I don't remember like the determination on that.
I do recall in an email that she was looking for staff to have an opportunity to do that. And I don't think, I'm just asking for an update if staff has found any time to do it.
I haven't. I'll ask Dylan. No, it's something we'll look into as soon as we can. Applications seem to be slowing down as we approach the winter, so should be relatively soon.
Because I know there's probably four or five projects that we've had a condition of administrative reviews, and I just want to know, is that something that we're following through with or has it fallen somewhere else? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Katrumbis, could you just talk to Ms. Sigliani too? Just if we can have that as a standing item, whether it's on the docket once a month or whatever, however you want to, DPD wants to kind of present it, that's fine. To Mr. McCarthy's comments, we talked about this last time, so I just, I want to make sure we are, we're following up, not just for ourselves, but the public, if we're talking about this, the public is also wondering as well, so. So you could just talk, talk to the team of DPD, however you guys want to present it, the standing item every month, every other month, however, for the, for the updates, and that'd be great. All right, any other comments or edits to the minutes from October 13th? Seeing none, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of 10:13:22.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by the vice chair, Ms. Callahan. Roll call, please.
Chairman Peck.
Approve the minutes.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve meeting minutes for October 13th, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for October 13th, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve minutes, October 13th, 2022.
Member Hovey.
Approve the minutes.
There's no further comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, since we jumped right into it, we didn't have a chance to welcome, congratulate our new associate board member, Tim Hovey. So welcome, Tim, and glad you're on the board and look forward to working with you. And now is the time for you to sing your college fight song.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I want to echo the sentiments. Mr. Hovey, welcome to the team, sir. Look forward to working with you as we serve the city. You know, I sat at that chair probably 11 or 12 years ago, so I get it. It's really kind of the work. It's a lot of hours and time invested and very little people see the investment people make when we're on the board. And it's, it's really valued, I think. So thank you for your commitments, sir. We appreciate you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you all.
I just want to thank you for joining our team, and I personally am open to any constructive criticism if you want to throw my way. And thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, can we motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn, second by Mr. Ms. Callahan, the vice chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Good night, everybody.
All right, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you, Sandy. Have a good night.
Good night.